And doing your will, Lord, as we govern, that we just think of you, God, and just treat everybody equal, do the best for our city. And, God, I just ask you to continue to bless our first responders, Lord, as they're out there doing your will. And, God, thank you for yesterday's Veterans Day and the men and women who are still in harm's way, and just protect them and be with them and be with their family. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Please join me for the pledge. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam City Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sabino?
Present.
Councilmember Henderson?
Present.
Councilmember Allen?
Present.
Mayor Proton Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Hussey?
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum?
Thank you. Item A, recording or additional removal, any items on agenda? Do we have any?
No additions or deletions.
All right. None? Okay. Item B, public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any item not appearing at the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the City Council may discuss, may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made and ask questions for clarifications. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff through questions risen during the public comment and may request a matter of the agendas for future meetings. Do we have any public comment?
Yes. Robert Sanchez?
My comment is just some questions in regards to the power outages last week. It totally affected a lot of us. I'm just trying to clarify if I'm on Grand Terrace Road, did something change with any type of zoning? Because in the past, I've never seen power outages in that area for wind and whatnot, until this is the first year in 10 years that I lived there. So, just wanted to get some clarification if anything changed, so I can be aware of to kind of prepare in the future. So, that's it. And, I mean, you can answer my question in the future, but I just wanted to see if the zoning changed in that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Conrad, do you want to answer?
Sure. We don't normally answer questions, but since it's affected the community, it's a big area. Southern California Edison determines what areas are turned off by whatever risk assessment or model they have for that. So, the city doesn't put any determination into that. So, I don't know what their model was. I know it had a huge impact on the city, and we have strongly requested a meeting with Edison's executives to go over the process, what they've got set up, how it was set up, and the entire procedure, because throughout the city, there's some things that could have been done better.
Yeah. Just be prepared for anything. Have generators and anything else. It was quite a deal, so... Do we have any other public comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Item C, special presentations. Partnership, well, number one, special presentation is partnership with Grid Alternatives for the city of Grand Terrace by Ms. Figueroa. You want to come on up here? Are you earning your pay tonight?
Hello?
Are you going to earn your pay tonight, young lady?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Okay. So, hi, my name is Dinaia Figueroa. I'm an intern at the city of Grand Terrace, and I am asking that we partner with Grid Alternatives. Is there like a clicker so I could go to the next slide? Where? Okay. So, this supports our 2030 vision statement, which is goal number four, to develop implementing a successful partnership by preparing for their growth for the development of solar energy for low-income residents here in Grand Terrace. Something about Grid Alternatives is that they are a nonprofit solar company that installs solar on qualifying homes. This is all paid for through like funded through SASH, which is the Single Family Affordable Solar Homes Program, as well as the California Utilities Commission and the California's Cap and Trade Program. What I am requesting is that we just make a collaboration to market the solar program. So, this would be developing brochures that utilizes their logos and their names, which Grid has offered to pay for, and I will help design them. Also, hold a workshop at a city facility to promote this program and advertise it on the city's webpage, in all which I will assist, and utilize other promotional opportunities for Grid. We are currently in collaboration with several local cities, like neighboring cities such as like Colton, Ranch Cucamonga, Rialto, Upland, Redlands, and Riverside. The impact that this will have on Grand Terrace, such as the environmental impact, there will be no such environmental impact as the California Environmental Quality Act does not apply to projects in Section 15061, Part B, Section 3. And the economic impact is that this would just be an adoption of the proposed partnership with Grid Alternatives, which will save residents money through renewable energy sources, and there will be no fiscal impact. The collaboration will create no direct financial cost for the city of Grand Terrace. However, staff time will be required to assist in the promotional campaign, in which I will devote my own time, too. So, thank you for listening.
Okay. Will the staff have any questions? Councilwoman Sabino?
Should a resident qualify for this program and have the solar installed? Is there a like fixed number of years that they have to have that in place? Because I know with some solar companies, they end up putting like a second on the residence. So, can you tell us more?
Yes. So, me and Luis had a meeting with them. They said it is all funded through the Environmental Protection Agency, which is the EPA, and other organizations such as like SASH. So, that comes out of like tax dollars, basically. So, it's a nonprofit. They pay for everything, as well as installing each solar unit.
And then who's responsible for the maintenance?
They are. They do everything. They're their own contractors. They talk to the residents, everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Allen?
Okay. Thanks, Mayor, and thank you for that presentation. Can you tell me again, either flip back maybe, or tell me again, who is "they"? Give me the organization's name again, please?
It is Grid Alternatives. So, they are a nonprofit solar company, and they involve, they install solar systems on qualifying homes, such as low-income homes.
Okay. And even our residents could still qualify regardless of our actions tonight. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, basically, you have to be a certain income to qualify for this, for it to be free?
Yes.
And I know like on a lot of the sellers, because before they put them up there, they need to install new roofs. Will that be part of the thing? So, um...
Yes. That was involved when we talked to Grid. They said that they would have to go, they go to the families' houses, they talk with them about their solar, and then they look at the like facilities that they'll be working with, and then they come up with a solution from there.
So, to qualify, would my mayor's salary qualify me?
I don't think so, but we could ask them.
Okay. Well, you know, that's a good program. I mean, I have solar, and uh, but the biggest thing is the maintenance, like Councilwoman Sabino talked about, and then what the solar panels do to roofs and everything, you know?
Yes.
But yeah, does anybody else have any other questions? No? Okay. See, none. We open this to public commerce. It's a special presentation.
Presentation.
Okay. So, how did you feel doing your first presentation?
Okay. I was a little nervous, and then I was okay.
You did well.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. So, our next one is conceptual design for donated property.
Yes.
Is it David Lane?
Yes.
Okay.
David Lang with Lampert Diaz Architects.
Okay.
And we were very excited to get involved in this. The original program was a library and community auditorium project on a 1.7-acre vacant site. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. It's right across the street, basically, of Barton Road, from this facility here. And so, originally, we looked at it from a standpoint of, okay, what are our design goals? And it was really to create both a library and a community center with a café attached that have their own unique identity, but also function as a cohesive whole. And so, we wanted to create an iconic facility that really serves the community of Grand Terrace, and sort of almost like a part of the Grand Terrace sort of neighborhood and the image of Grand Terrace. So, I think the best thing to talk about this with, and I'm going to try to figure this clicker out, the young lady just figured it out pretty well here. That was obviously the wrong button. I might have to get a younger person up here. There we go. So, actually, let's go, okay, oh, that, there, okay. So, this goes forward?
Yes.
This one? Okay. I think the best thing is to talk about the site plan. Whoops. There, went too far. I may not be qua, I'm a very qualified architect, but I might not be a clicker-qualified person. Yes. Yeah. Absolutely. Absolutely. So, oh, I did bring a little device with me. Let me see if it works here. It's hard to see, but from the top, sort of the north, northeast corner to the southwest corner, the site slopes approximately 30 feet. And so, we wanted to kind of create a building that utilizes the slopes, steps, by stepping up the slope, and also by the use of horizontal roof lines, as you see when we will get into the design, sort of to really hug the slope. We have deep overhangs and really kind of look organic, like it belongs there on the slope and fits in well. So, the site access that we chose, because the first experience of people will be vehicular, and Victoria Street seemed to be the best place for the access, which is the street on the north here. Actually, this is, it's too far away. I should have bought the more expensive clicker. At any rate, so Barton Road, obviously, is too much traffic, and even Preston, so we're taking access on Victoria and also utilizing the slope of the site, the natural slope of the site, to create a two-story parking situation, so we can get quite a few more cars than we anticipated, and it still all flows very naturally. Also, from the flow of when you enter the site, you park, and then flow naturally to sort of the front of the project, which is, we've created a plaza where the buildings work off of the plaza. Each, the community center and the library will have their own identity, but they're kind of around that plaza. We also created at that point some water elements. So, to the, the south of the library, we have a deck, and there's actually, that's a second-story deck, and the waterfall, oh, there's a waterfall that comes down into a koi pond, and so we have a series of water elements, and it'll be both active and calming. So, we want to create a very pleasant space for people to relate to, to orient themselves. In terms of the parking, we have 76 parking spaces, and we have four handicap spaces and 12 electric vehicle charging stations. And why don't I go ahead and continue on? Okay, let's see, this way is, whoop, wrong way. You were just talking about solar panels. You can see that we've, we're also considering solar panels on the roof. Okay. So, the first level is kind of, is this out of focus? I don't know, but it's kind of hard to see, but the first level, we have the entry to the library, and also the café is below the community center. The behind the café and tucked away, we have a delivery area behind the community center. So, that's tucked away. It's actually covered by, or surrounded by a green wall, so easy to get in, easy to service all the functions, both the library and the community center, but also we've kept the delivery traffic totally separate from the customer traffic. And so, you'd go in, parking throughout, and then on the south side, there's a ramp that would take you to the upper, upper level. And you can see, as the library moves up, it steps up with the slope. That's the first level of the community center above the café. And also, and you'll see when I get into the interior pictures, that you get that sense of volume. So, as you're in the library, you can see stepping up all the way to the top level, to the third level. We have a big deck that works off of the second level, and there's a water element on the deck, which then becomes the waterfall that feeds the koi pond down below in the plaza. And then the third level, once again, big use of volumes, you can definitely see throughout the whole project, which is very good for a library, for security reasons, to have it completely open. One of the things I always want to mention, in the upper northeast corner, we have a giant flagpole for a flag. So, once again, creating that identity for the city of, for the city of Grand Terrace. And one of the things about the project also is that, or the site, is that we have fantastic views, almost 180 degrees. So, we've tried, we've designed the project to take advantage of those views, both from all kinds of decks and from the library itself and from the plaza. So, let's go ahead and start to, okay, going the wrong way again. Here we go. Okay. These are kind of aerial views. So, this is from the south, from the northeast. This is the view from the north. And this is kind of the main money shot. As you go up Barton Road, you see this iconic, iconic building. Once again, you can see the overhangs that create that horizontal feeling. You can have the feeling of the building stepping up the hill and working into the site.
So, for the council, real quick, you guys are taking pictures. We'll get you a packet with all the details. You can save the film, or pixels, or whatever it is.
Yeah. So, also, on the corner here, there's a bus stop, and so we've created both a stair and a handicap ramp access to our main plaza from the bus stop at the corner of Barton Road and Preston. That's the view from that corner. This is the view from Barton Road. This is further east on Barton Road. This is right at the corner of Preston and Barton Road. So, you can see, once again, that we have a library, we have a community center, they work together as a whole, but yet they have their own unique identity. One thing I want to mention to you, I should have mentioned when I was on the floor plan, but for after-hours, when the library is closed and the community auditorium is open, there is an elevator that you can easily access right next to the stairs that will take you up to the community center and can be easily gated off from the library. So, we have one elevator that serves all the floors of the library, but it would also serve the community center when the library is closed. It's from Preston Road. And one of the things that we did is, so that's our main plaza, you're drawn to the community center up the stairs, because, excuse me, the community center starts on the second level. You're drawn by that tower element, which is an old Roman trick. They had the caponilia, so it kind of draws you up the stairs, very decorative stair. We've created a fountain working into the stairwell, and behind the fountain, we put a donor wall to help you guys raise funds for the center. This is another shot. You can see here, very attractive way to pull you up to the community auditorium. The café is below the auditorium, views all around, and the library working off of that. So, it all works together quite efficiently. This is from Preston Road. This is the main entry to the parking. We're going to have, for security reasons, we put up a gate that would be open when they're open. This is, you can see the second-level deck on that faces Barton Road. This is a shot of the deck with the water element. So, we've also put some gazebo's up there, so people can get a book, go outside, read. Children can play in the water element, taking advantage of the views. This is, you know, the deck, and you can see the beginning of the waterfall that goes down to the koi pond below. This is on our third level, we also have a deck. So, this is the deck on the third level. And these are some interior views. You can see the openness of the library, easy to monitor the stacks, and just a feeling And this is an interior view of the auditorium. So, once again, that'd have a feeling of openness, elegance. And so, that is it, and I am able to answer any of your questions.
Can I jump in real quick?
Yes.
And touch a couple of things? So, the original discussion with David was to create a library and a community, community center-type activity. And as we discussed this, we ended up with that auditorium building as a stacked building, and said, not just having a library, but something that draws people in, even outside, you can kind of see it up there on the front. That bottoms, the bottom level on the top building, the auditorium, is halfway's under the building, within, the idea is a coffee shop or some type of a café or dining area or something, so that people can come, even if you're not going to the library, that's a destination, and the library can be, the library can be a secondary, or it's a primary and it feeds into it. And then if we do have events in the evening, then that café also provides a meeting place and a draw as part of the event. And then we really looked at that auditorium. Originally, it was a big, just a big community room. So, you know, we could really get a usable space for kind of those things, the thing that we're missing in the city. We have a decent community room, but someplace where we can sit, you know, outside of council chambers, 60, 70 people, and have a state-of-the-city or some type of presentation, or something going on. So, I think all in all, it's a great resource, and the interior was one of those things we looked at as, and David brought it out, as big, wide-open spaces, because while I still love books, you know, libraries are changing, and they're not all about books anymore. So, there's big collaborative spaces in there, spaces for activities, spaces for people to get together and to exchange information, more of a meeting place, an idea exchange building than a warehouse for books. So, that is the concept. And as the presentation, I know you guys are going to ask the very first thing, why are we having this presentation? But we have the land donated, and what we wanted to do was really get a conceptual pin in, first, to get feedback, are we headed in the right direction? Is that something that we want there, or do you want something else there? And secondly, this is going to be an expensive building, and with something like this, then that gives us a chance to start looking for grants, other funding opportunities, and you know, this is a generational building. It's not going to be built next year. It may not even be built in my lifetime, but those are the things we need to lay the groundwork today, so that when the community is ready for it, it will be there. So, with that, are there questions?
So, does the council have questions? Well, my thing is, you know, the auditorium looks nice, but everybody that I hear in our town wants a big community room. And I know you said they have a café down there, you know, but how often will we use auditorium? I mean, that's, because most people, they want to know, like, let's just say, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the people, they want a gathering place where they could, or even wedding receptions or the women's club. I mean, they're not going to be there in auditorium. So, I think auditorium, in my opinion, is a little overkill, because we do have an auditorium in the city, and that's the high school that they let everybody use. So, I, my opinion, I think that's a waste of space that's probably not going to be used, when I think it's better used to be a community center for stuff, for clubs and everything else.
So, part of the follow-up on that, and that was why we originally started with the community room, and we looked at it and said, when this is done, we will have vacant library space, which gives us the ability, as a part of this project, to use the community room and the library space as a gathering space here at City Hall. So, how we purpose that is open for, certainly open for discussion as we get down through the design phase of this, but, and like I said, I really wanted to put a pin in, just is that a, is that a concept of what we want?
Well, the thing, what I'm saying, because even like, you know, I'm the vice president for the League of Cities, and we have to go to, we had to go to Highgrove's Police Department for one of our things, because we really don't have places like that. And I go to Ranch Cucamonga, where they have a big room, where we could have, you know, chairs and sit, and we could also, you know, have, break bread, just like the National Day of Prayer. They're not going to do an auditorium, they're going to want to sit and break bread. So, that's my thing, is a big banquet room for things like that, to have that. Auditorium, I don't see that being used as much. Councilwoman Sabino? Yes?
Just to throw spaghetti on the wall, I understand that we have the auditorium at the high school. However, that auditorium hasn't always been functional because of the needs over there that aren't always met in a timely manner. And so, I see the virtue and the benefit of having an auditorium here, as well as if a hotel ends up getting resurrected here in Grand Terrace, then we have the opportunity to have a banquet conference space in a facility such as that, that would be managed somewhere else. I believe that, bringing the arts. We have a dance studio here that doesn't have a place where they can always perform. Our high schoolers do have to go off-site, you know, our seniors for their graduation. I could see the benefit of an auditorium in that space, as well as, we don't have a theater program here, and so our youth and our adults don't have that opportunity. So, I could see the virtue in that. And I appreciate the open layout. I respectfully would like to see it less of a college space, just in the, some of the outside design, maybe even just softening a little. I know it's just a concept right now, and that's my only feedback, but I love the thought that you've put into it, so thank you.
Thank you.
So, Councilwoman, what are you talking about, their auditorium's not working at the school? Is there issues there? Because I know we paid good money for the auditorium, taxpayers did.
They've had roofing issues and leaks for some time, and...
Okay. Thank you.
So, I think for our purposes, sorry, Councilman Henderson, just to clarify that we have a building with community space that, you know, is defined... a building with community space that, you know, is definable as we go forward. And this, like I said, this is a generational building. So if we put a pin at it that says, you know, we need a community space, auditorium, community room, wrestling gym, whatever that is, where we want people to come together, and that that needs to be incorporated in that, then the following iterations is something that we can dial it in a little closer.
Councilman Henderson, yes?
I'm generally supportive of the concept and what's being proposed. I will say that we should not, as a body, remain captive to what the situation is today in Grand Terrace. As the city manager indicated, we're talking fifteen, maybe twenty years down the road. But the planning for these things should start today, if at all possible. On tonight's agenda, we have a legislative advocacy program. And assuming the council is supportive of that and approves it, a library project like this would be one of the critical factors of implementation going forward. My last comment on this is that maybe the concept hits the council a little cold with this special presentation. I would suggest that we give the planning commission an opportunity to review the concept, weigh in, and provide appropriate commentary and recommendations to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protan?
One thing I have been concerned about in relation to this project is, we don't want to get too far down the line, money-wise, without, you know, some public input. And so, of course, that's going to be integral to the situation. I echo what the mayor is talking about, a large meeting room-type circumstance, kind of almost the size of a half-basketball court, where you've got a flat plain, and then a raised stage down at the end of it, can accomplish the same thing what you're doing here, so far as, rather than a theater, and it gives you the utility to be able to put tables out in the middle of that, and service that area, and do several different types of functions. And I don't think that's going to change a lot over the next fifteen to twenty years, any more than we'll be, you know, flying cars down the freeway. So I think that makes sense. And so I see a zero footage there at the floor level, and then a three-foot hike-up with a stage. Makes more sense to me. It's much more utility-oriented, so. But then that's the only comment I have right now. So we'll have more fun with it as we receive some things to mark up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. That donor wall might need to be bigger, though.
(laughing)
You want to know what the price tag of this is going to be, but...
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Consent calendar, the following consent calendar. Items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be acted upon in the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of the item from the consent calendar for discussion. Now, is there any public comment on the consent calendar?
No, sir.
Okay. Does the council want to remove any items for discussion? No? Okay, city attorney, before we, do you want to wait till we get a motion first?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Councilwoman Savino?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henderson. City attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have four ordinances on the agenda for second reading. I'll read the titles of each of them. So for item number five, the ordinance title is as follows. Ordinance number 360, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, repealing Chapter 2.20, Community Redevelopment Agency; Chapter 2.28, Emergency Organization; and Chapter 2.40, Training of Law Enforcement Officers of Title II Administration and Personnel; Chapter 6.16, Hogs; Chapter 6.24, Livestock; Chapter 6.12, Apiaries; Chapter 6.20, Commercial Kennels; and Chapter 6.28, Riding Academies of Title VI Animals; Chapter 8.16, Aircraft Takeoff and Landings; Chapter 8.24, Ambulances; and Chapter 8.72, Abandoned Orchards of Title VIII, Health and Safety; and Chapter 9.26, Synthetic Drugs, Sale and Use Prohibited of Title IX, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, to streamline the municipal code and remove provisions no longer necessary. For item number six, the ordinance is, ordinance number 361, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, adding Section 9.05.040, seizure of evidence, and Section 9.05.050, impoundment to the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, to provide additional enforcement mechanisms for violation of sidewalk vendor regulations in order to protect public health, safety, and welfare. Item number seven is ordinance number 362, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, adding Chapter 9.32 of Title IX to the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, to prohibit unlawful camping and storage of personal property. And lastly, agenda item eight, ordinance number 363, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, adding Chapter 9.36 of Title IX to the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, to prohibit any unsanctioned government-sponsored relocation of unhoused persons to the city of Grand Terrace. Each of those ordinances are set for second reading and adoption, by adoption of the consent calendar. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So I have a motion for item one through ten, and a second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, council. Item E, public hearing, ordinance 12.28, Street and Parkway Tree Revision, first read by Ms. Tillman.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Shanita Tillman, Senior Management Analyst. I'm here to discuss the proposed revisions to ordinance 12.28, focused on street and parkway trees. The purpose of the revision is to strengthen our community's urban forest management with clear guidelines and defined responsibilities. The staff report supports the city's 2030 vision, goal number one, focused on ensuring fiscal stability by improving service guidelines and clarifying maintenance responsibilities. We're working to provide effective services while ensuring proper cost recovery. Ordinance 12.28 was established in 1979 to regulate planting, maintenance, and removal of trees on public streets and parkways, with the goal of enhancing aesthetics and environmental benefits to urban forestries. In 2017, it was updated to include a fee schedule, fines, and taxes, along with assigning tree maintenance responsibilities to homeowners. Today's proposed revisions build on this foundation to improve clarity and efficiency. The new ordinance introduces several key updates. First, regarding the right-of-way access. Certain areas within the city lack curb and gutter improvements, making it challenging to apply the distances outlined in the general plan. For these properties, residents will need to complete a right-of-way dedication easement form to access tree maintenance services. Additionally, we've clarified definitions, including "city tree," which refers to trees in the parkway areas or within a specified distance from the street center line. For local streets, this includes any tree within thirty feet of the street center line. We've also redefined maintenance responsibilities to ensure city-managed trees receive consistent professional care. Homeowners will be allowed, excuse me, homeowners will be allowed to remove certain trees with a no-cost encroachment permit, such as palms and volunteer trees. However, they will be responsible for the removal of any unapproved trees planted within the city's right-of-way. In addition to key revisions, the ordinance outlines routine maintenance expectations. Homeowners are responsible for watering adjacent trees, cleaning up ground cover, and keeping sidewalks clear of seeds, debris, or debris, which helps the community's cleanliness and safety. We've also developed a tree list based on parkway size to ensure that trees are selected according to available space, supporting the neighborhood aesthetic and biodiversity. Finally, identifying city trees will be guided by the 2010 Circulation Plan, which outlines street widths, and will service the baseline for trees the city is responsible for if the tree falls within the city's right-of-way. And now that we've covered some of the proposed revisions, I want to take a moment to provide some additional context regarding the city's right-of-way, particularly in residential areas. While these areas are managed by the city for infrastructure and tree planting, there are certain responsibilities and guidelines that homeowners need to be aware of. The next slide will give you a better understanding of how the city's right-of-way functions and how homeowners are involved in its maintenance. The city's right-of-way...
Excuse me, Ms. Tillman?
Sure.
I just have a question, clarification on the definition of adjacent tree watering. We're talking about privately-owned trees, not city trees, correct?
We're talking city trees. So...
City trees.
Yes, so a tree that falls in the city's parkway would be the adjacent property owner's responsibility to make sure it's watered. So that would typically be the area in between the street and the sidewalk. There's like, green space.
Correct.
So those trees, the adjacent property owner is responsible for watering. And that's currently already in our code. That's not new.
Okay, thank you.
The presidents are also responsible for maintaining that, mowing the grass, keeping the weeds out of that strip.
Yes.
So whatever, that piece between the front of your property line, whether that may be, and the curb is the resident responsibility to maintain. The tree just happens to fall into that.
The city's, the city's right-of-way extends from the street curb to the sidewalk, which may sometimes include a portion of the city's home, the homeowner's front lawn, if unimproved. This area is considered public property and is managed by the city for infrastructure purposes, including roads, sidewalks, utilities, and tree planting. While homeowners are responsible for maintaining this space, any changes they wish to make, such as planting new trees, removing existing ones, or constructing structures, require approval from the city. In some cases, homeowners may need to obtain an encroachment permit if they plan to modify anything within the city's right-of-way. This ensures that any alterations align with city standards and do not interfere with public infrastructure. The ordinance encourages resident participation within budgetary limits. By allowing homeowners to plant trees in the city right-of-way through formal agreements, they can also prune or remove trees at their own expense with city approval and under-licensed care. This gives homeowners more control over the property maintenance in front of their homes, while ensuring the city maintains oversight, fostering shared responsibility for urban forestry. And lastly, staff recommends the following: Introduce an ordinance to amend Title 12, replacing Chapter 12.28 entirely. Read by title only, and waive further reading, and conduct a public hearing. Thank you. Any questions?
Councilman Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Tillman, for that report. It was a good one. So I just, I was thinking about what Councilman Member Henderson had mentioned, and I'm thinking about the streets we have that have sound walls on them, Mount Vernon, Maine. The, on the city side of, those homeowners are not going to be responsible for that, are they?
No, on that side of the wall, we irrigate, take care of that ourselves.
Okay.
We're talking basically the front yard trees...
Okay.
...on residential streets.
Okay.
And that front yard strip along the front of your house, that four, six, sometimes ten-foot-wide strip. And as Ms. Tillman said, sometimes it can be six feet deep into your front yard, into the grass. But the maintenance of that, just as part of the community, is responsible for each homeowner.
Okay, I just want to also be, I just want to be clear that my understanding is that, that those homeowners who have trees parked or planted in the city's right-of-way that are not on the list, they're good, they're still okay. They're good to go right now, right?
What do you mean by "on the list"? So we...
The approved, the list of approved trees and shrubs. If they've got something that's not on the list, they're still okay right now?
That's correct.
Okay. And as long as they're willing to maintain it and take care of it themselves?
That's correct. So the city does have its routine maintenance, and it is on a cycle basis. At the moment, each zone, so similar to the street sweeping zone, each zone is done once every five years. So if property owners are interested in maintaining their trees sooner than the city can, they are welcome to do so with a no-fee encroachment permit.
It's just if they want the city to take over maintenance, then they can go do the no-fee permit, and y'all will take care of it, right? That's my understanding.
With the no-fee encroachment permit, the homeowner would be taking care of it. Otherwise, they would be waiting for the city to do it on its routine cycle.
So if a homeowner does not have a no-fee encroachment permit right now, but they have non-listed trees, and they want to take care of them themselves, do they need to go get a permit?
Anything done in the city's right-of-way would need an encroachment permit.
To answer, yes.
Okay, then let me ask...
And the purpose is, we will come around and take care of, even if they're not on the list, trees.
Okay.
We will take care of the trees in the right-of-way once every five years.
Yeah.
If you, as a homeowner, say, you know what, I'd really like my tree trimmed every three years, get the permit, and then you can trim it every year if you like. But we will only trim it every five years. And the list for, the list is only for new tree planting, with the purpose that, you know, we're planting them in a confined space between the curb and the sidewalk. We don't want stuff that has roots that run...
Yeah.
...that lift, cause damage to the street, the curb, irrigation systems. So we try and select species that are evergreen, and still, you know, get to a decent size, and aren't a real burden on the infrastructure around them. But we're not going to, just because your tree isn't on the list, we're not going to come chop it down and plant something that is on the list.
So there's the permit, I noticed in a previous agenda I were actually, it was on the consent calendar, that we're using a company called Symbium, or something like that, for automated permitting?
Symbium is being used for solar systems only.
Oh, okay, okay. So that won't...
No.
So that's only for automated permitting for solar systems?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So they'll still need to come in, do, and do the permit request on the front desk?
They'll come in, need to come in, fill out the form.
Okay.
It's a painless, over-the-counter matter. Three, four years ago, we were actually charging a hundred and fifty bucks for that. We stopped doing that. It seemed kind of like insult to injury, that you're going to take care of the tree for us, and you get to pay for it. So this way, we'll, you know, it's a fairly painless process, and we do it over the counter.
Okie do. Thanks.
Councilwoman Savino, you have a question?
Just a couple of questions. For that process, will it only be paper, or will we be moving towards like a docu-sign, so that way people don't have to come in over the counter?
At the moment, it's paper, but we definitely hope to move to a more automated system in the future.
And then also included in the packet, on page 130, ground cover is also included in that space. I know we're talking about trees and the maintenance taking place every five years. What is, is there any change, or what, and maybe I missed it, what is the timeline for maintaining shrubbery within the city?
I believe for ground cover, which is maintained by property owners, but ground cover can't exceed twelve inches in height. So at that point, when it exceeds twelve inches, it becomes a code enforcement issue.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So I know you said trees every five years for trimming. Some of these trees grow back pretty fast, and some of these trees are, well, they grow back so fast that they're touching people's homes, and, you know, causing fire hazards. So if a resident's request to have that tree trimmed, even though it was trimmed last year, what's your response on that? Because, one, the hazard that it's committing, and two, you know, it's just a fast-growing tree. Are we putting that on a different schedule than every five years?
We have, we have a couple of options, that we can work with the homeowner, they can fill out the permit and trim the tree themselves. Secondly, we can, on a case-by-pace basis, look at it and decide that, yes, this is something, that a tree we want to keep, and we'll trim it. Or if it's something that's so invasive and fast-growing that every year we have to cut it back from your house, we may very well take the tree and plant one that's on the approved list to replace it that isn't quite as aggressive.
Yeah, because... Yeah, 'cause, well, you know, I get that call every year from the Green Belt. The tree's touching those homes there. And I'm sure that those homes are in part of the Cal Fire's, uh, fire zone now. And a lot of people had to cut trees down because of that. So that might be something we look at. And then on cutting, if a tree is contaminated or does have a rot that they can't see— 'cause I know we had a homeowner that came home from vacation, and his mulberry tree was gone. You know, and, um, they understand, you know, they come back and the tree's gone, but they understand it was a city's tree, and they saw a wood rot inside. So what announcements besides just putting a—a sticker on a tree that we moved up to now?
Um, our arborists have been made aware that they are to make contact with property owners prior to removing trees. Um, that does include notices on doors and the tree. Um, beyond that, we can look into other options. But we do want to make sure that our residents are aware of any removals to trees in their property.
Yeah, 'cause a lot of people don't go through their front door either. They go through the garage, so. Maybe a mailer out to them or something.
Okay.
And then if a homeowner doesn't want to have that tree done, removed, but we have to because of legal reasons, you know, 'cause the sidewalk's getting damaged or something, but they're out there throwing a fit, what repercussions would that happen?
They—they are ultimately our trees.
Okay. You know, if they want to take responsibility for anything?
Um, if—it would be an unusual stretch, because if they're taking responsibilities, that means they're responsible for curb gutter, sidewalk asphalt, which could run into the tens of thousands of dollars. And it's great to say I'll be responsible for it now, but in three years from now—
Exactly. Well, I just want to make them aware of like the—the legal things that happen, 'cause I know we got that one sidewalk that looks like a new skate park. All right, any other questions? Now, do we have any public comment on this?
No, sir.
Okay, no public comment. We'll close public hearing. The council delivered some public hearing, nothing. So do I have a motion for this item? Motion for approval by the mayor of the town?
I'll make a second.
Say goodbye, Councilor Allen. Uh, city attorney, you have anything to add?
I'll just read the title of the ordinance.
Okay.
It is as follows: An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, repealing and replacing Chapter 12.28, Street and Parkway Trees of Title 12, Streets, Sidewalks, Sidewalks and Public Places of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, Regulating Street and Parkway Tree Maintenance. And this is for first reading and introduction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. We have a motion. Second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Tillman. Item F, unfinished business, non. Item G, new business: Establishment of Legislative Activit Advocacy and Grant Acquisition Program by the city manager. Well, he moved pretty fast. I just looked over there.
Not—not fast for—not bad for a fat kid, huh? So this, uh—where's—where's—I'm gonna have the arch—I got architect disease. I need to push the button. Do I have a presentation, A.J.? Okay, so we'll wing it from here. All right, so, um, what—what we've had is, over—the year is a real challenge to put together an advocacy program that makes sense, has focused individuals on staff, and continues to provide a consistent and clear message to all levels of, uh, of agencies or government that we deal with. So if you have the program in your packet, and I'm gonna go over a couple of the—the main points. First, you know, if we look at the—the program's structure, at the core of it is a specialized committee. It's composed of the city manager, a designee, and a dedicated lobbyist. So the committee will oversee legislative and grant acquisition activities, and the city manager, their designee, will act as the legislative liaison. So what—we're looking at is, there's—a designated group in the city, which we don't have now. It's kind of whoever gets pointed, that is responsible for these activities. And there's a staff person whose job it is to make sure that we're following these grants, we're available, we know what's available, and that we're applying on time, meeting the requirements, and also making sure that there's a staff relationship with legislators, their—their staff as well. 'Cause one of the frustrations that we have is you end up going to Sacramento. You meet—you meet staff, and they have no idea who you are, and there's no relationship there. So we have a staff-to-staff relationship built. So—and additionally in this, the elected officials play a crucial role in this. So, um, that they're elected—you, as electeds, are—are face to the program. So when—when the time comes, there is an important role so that the electeds are aware of what's going on, aware of where we're headed, what we're looking for and our priorities, and they're able to provide that one-on-one connection. And the purpose for the—the analyst—or, sorry, the, um, lobbyist when we get there is to make sure that there's a personal relationship at the—in Sacramento or wherever we're dealing with, so that those doors open, and we can use—we can leverage those relationships so that usually electeds have access. The next important piece is, is that we have annual priorities. So we structured this so that as part of our budget process, we—we—we try to do priority projects every year as part of the budgeting process, that we continue this, and we set these priorities for what we're looking for as far as grants and the efforts we're putting in. What's—what's happened in the past is, there's been a real shotgun approach. There's a grant, let's go get some money. And, um, that particular grant, while it may be, quote, "free money", it may not be furthering exactly where we want to go. And the grants take—even if it's a completely free grant, take time and effort to manage, take time and effort to acquire, take time and effort to close out and do all the work. So a free grant could very easily cost a couple hundred hours of staff time, where it's no longer free. And we could take this staff time and focus it on the—the specific issues and the specific things we're looking for, rather than just chasing every free dollar that's out there. And it'll—it'll really allow us to provide for the—a real focused effort on our top goals and make sure that this is coordinated with the input from the council as part of the budget process, as part of our annual priority projects, to make sure that we're all headed the right direction and that the—the council vision is translated to staff action. It includes, um, an advocacy—advocacy strategies, including relationship building, coalition efforts, and public engagement. So with this, our—our staff person will be then working to build the relationships, not just at the state level or the—the legislative level, but also in the community, because there's community feedback. The Chamber of Commerce, our businesses, other stakeholders that may have a—you know, a horse in the race, um, will want to be—provide input into this process so that we have a point for that input, and we can build that coalition and that public input together. So we'll—we'll also be doing—you know, working with key departments to track and coordinate the opportunities, to support an efficient grant management system. So we're following through. Right now, we have a couple of grants. One's in public works, one's in planning, one's—they're scattered around. We have different staff members taking care of different grants. If there's somebody that's focused on managing those grants, there's a consistent, professional, clean way of doing it. And not that—not that anybody's being, you know, careless with it, but if we have the same person who—that's their skill set, knows what they're looking at, and it makes it much more efficient and easier to deal with the—the grants. And the—the biggest part of that is, is then if there's one person following it, we can hit our deadlines, we can hit our goals. We've had grants in the past that were fairly substantial, that we had to give back, because we didn't hit our goals. We didn't hit our deadlines. Uh, they got lost someplace, or—or there was some reporting period that was missed, just— And so we want to make sure that we don't—once we get a grant, we don't fritter that away by not completing the proper process. And then finally, to have monitoring, evaluation, and training. This is built in, so that we're looking for ongoing successes by providing the—the feedback to the council. There'll be constant monitoring, both at the staff level, the elected level. We'll be evaluating our successes. And part of this is having—the—and—and I'm not looking for funding right now, but to have the framework so that when we have the—the funding as necessary in budget year going forward, for a lobbyist that is a professional at this, not at the staff level, that has the connections and the ties in—in the legislative arena, that can provide the proper evaluation for how we're approaching this, and also coach our staff and work together as an integrated team. And then finally, training to make sure that as we're going forward, the people who are doing this are trained, and it's not somebody that just happened to get a grant packet thrown on their desk, as—as we've had here so many times, with, you know, "With this thing's due on Tuesday, fill it out." And so we—we really want to have that consistency. So overall, I—I think the program in total brings all the pieces together, provides good—good feedback, good direction, and a really focused point and vision for us to go after very specific, focused grants and use our energy and resources appropriately. Any questions?
Staff, any questions?
Just a comment. Thank you for the presentation and for hearing our concerns at the last meeting of, you know, wanting to get this up and running. You—you've been very thorough, just in being able to detail out. I remember—as I was reading through it, I had questions. I was like, "Oh, he answered that right there." So, um, I—I appreciate what y'all have done here. And I definitely—as someone—and I say this time and time again, as someone who eats, sleeps, and breathes legislation, I—I understand the importance of this project and—and everything that you've laid out here. I mean, I've done trainings up and down the state of California, not only of how to build those relationships with legislators, not only at a state but at a federal level, um, being able to engage them and advocate as well as training grassroots organizations. So, um, hats off to you with what you've done here. Thank you.
Thank you, but I do also have to give—Councilmember Henderson has been invaluable in providing, um, insight and resources and, you know, kind of keep—keeping me on task on this. So I—the—the "thank you" really goes to that end of the—the—the dais.
I know I heard about it all the way on that lonely highway you talked about. Councilor Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. So I have a question. In the past, the only lobby, um, effort that we've ever been a part of was the Cal Cities membership, as—as far as I know. Is that—and so what I'm wondering is, are we looking at this to supplant that? Or to—in addition, are we gonna—you know, are we gonna replace that effort with this effort? Or do you see this as being a—
This—the Cal Cities is—in supportive of this.
I'm sorry?
Cal Cities is in supportive of this, because our—our lobbying efforts through Cal Cities is more as a—a broad shotgun support for cities as a whole in California.
Yep.
Our needs may not be the same as Visalia or San Diego or Wyreka.
For sure.
So what this allows us for is a very closely tailored, definite need to our specific needs. So Cal Cities, while supporting cities and the broad needs of cities, is effective. We need somebody that will support a, you know, a stormwater runoff system, a, you know, traffic signals on an intersection, Mount Vernon slope, uh, you know, these—the sidewalks on—on Michigan Street. And so these are things that we have to have a very specific, um, focus on. And your initial part of the question is, yes, it will take a professional lobbyist to do it. We don't have the resources to plant somebody in Sacramento and Washington, D.C. and have their life be involved going from office to office to office, whining and dining and building relationships. So we essentially—we will be buying somebody's relationship for some portion of their—their existence.
All right. Thank you.
Councilor Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank the city manager and staff for preparing this item and placing it on the agenda. Uh, I think my colleagues recall that I had asked for, uh, suggested items for the agenda Legislative Advocacy Program. And I'm happy that this is on the agenda, uh, and I'm hopeful that my colleagues will support what the manager has prepared and recommended. I can tell you from my active-duty experience that I have worked in successful legislative advocacy programs and unsuccessful legislative advocacy programs. I would dare say that if we had a legislative advocacy program, in the 40-plus years we've been in Incorporated Community, we'd be in a different place, uh, on a number of different fronts. But most importantly, I want to say that Legislative Advocacy and Grant Acquisition Program is a long-view operation. No one should confuse the fact that we hire lobbyists today, and next fiscal year we'll have a grant that we will be implementing. That can happen, but only through effective planning and even more effective implementation. But the—the best example I can give you is when I worked at another community for 16 years. We worked on a project, a bridge project, that eventually cost $121 million. And we till the soil for the better part of 10 years. Deborah Thomas knows what I'm talking about. And, um, it was a lot of fits and starts, but we had excellent relationships with our congressman at the time. And we were able to use his good offices to continue to support and earmark the program on behalf of the community. And eventually, we were successful. And that bridge is in place today, connecting Apple Valley and Victorville and the Interstate 15 freeway. And our portion of it was $121 million. So it never would have happened if we hadn't taken the time and put in the effort to build the relationships, to nurture the relationships, and to continue going forward. So what the manager has recommended in terms of the annual budgeting process and the annual goal-setting process is critical, I think, to the success of this program. The council gets a chance to renew the program every year, to prioritize or reprioritize as appropriate, and it just makes the whole effort, uh, that much more effective, particularly—particularly for a city government staffing complement that is not nearly as generous as it is for the surrounding and competing communities. So I think the manager has done a really good job in terms of identifying major areas of responsibility, who's responsible: staff, consultant, grant committee, and of course, the city council. And it'll make the city council's job much, much easier when you travel to Sacramento or even Washington, D.C. for, um, our annual legislative effort. So if you've listened this far, thank you for your time and attention.
So if I can add one—one thing, and Councilman Henderson touched on it. But this is, just like the library and just like tree planting, this is a long-term project. And I know you've all heard me, you know, do the preaching. We're—we're a community in transition. We're a community that can do better, and we will do better. And, you know, one of the things is, we can do better. And these—this is, along with these other things, laying down that groundwork that five, seven, 10, 15 years from now, we can do better. But if we don't do it now, we're never gonna get there.
Yeah, and I—I agree with everybody's comment, and the thing is, we did probably let a lot of money go that could have been used for the city. Our relationship with, uh, Sacramento wasn't all there. I—you know, I felt like we were, uh, stepchildren for a while, not knowing who our senator or assembly person is. All of a sudden, they keep switching. When we went up to Sacramento, you know, we're begging to talk to people. But thank God, after this election, we got—I—we got a pretty good, strong senator and a pretty good, strong assembly person. But we already have relationships with the city, so that helps. But yet, having the—the lobbyist, the person who knows the ins and outs, and somebody dedicated for the grant program, that's the big thing. You know, it's our tax dollars too, and, you know, we pay a lot, and we don't want Grand Terrace to be forgotten about. We have storm drain issues to take care of. We'd like to see if we could partner with Colton on that Mount Vernon slope. We got a lot of things that we want to do. I mean, just like the drawing for the community center, that's great, but we also have—the biggest thing is infrastructure, getting the money for that, you know? And that's what we need. You know, we got roads to be repaired. So this is a good idea and a—a great thing. Thank you, Conrad, for bringing it. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comment on this?
Yes, Johan Gao.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. As I said—
Good evening, Mayor and council members. As I sit, as I stand here, and I think about four years we spent with Lieutenant Wolf, Assemblymember Reyes, and got nowhere. And so, I'm a strong supporter of what's being proposed tonight. I think Councilmember Henderson knows all too well, it took me 25 years to move a bill in Sacramento. They wanted to put my name on it last year because I was retiring, and I said, no. The key in all of this is, we had a simple saying in our group, "If you're not at the table, you're on the menu." And that can't be good. So, I strongly encourage the council and the mayor to vote in favor of this because I think the only way we're going to get things done is, Councilmember Sabino and I know very well, we track legislation, we devour it, we live and sleep, breathe legislation because we never know what's happening in Sacramento if we're not on top of it. So, I strongly support you voting in favor of it. The sooner we can get a lobbyist, we've had a lobbyist in our group for 32 years. The only way we've been able to move anything is to have a lobbyist, to have somebody on the pavement, in the halls, every day, moving things forward. They told us we couldn't take on the new car dealers and the manufacturers. We put a woman up on the Capitol Mall in a van with a giant padlock on it. The point in all of it is, you're not being able to fix your car because you're locked out of it. Today, people are locked out of their phones, they're locked out of their appliances. So, the right to repair is something we started over 20 years ago, and we beat the car dealers and the manufacturers because everybody related to the mom whose minivan was up there on Capitol Mall with a giant lock on it, saying, "I'm locked out of my vehicle. It's a weekend, and I can't get it fixed because the manufacturer won't give me access." So, you want to move things in Sacramento? Be there. You can't all be there. But you need somebody working the halls there and in federal government because that's how you get it done. I can only wonder how things would have been different with Assemblymember Reyes and the others that have been through here and done nothing for this community. So, I hope you vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, no other public comments. The council have any other additional comments they'd like to make?
I'd like to make the motion for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Henderson makes the motion?
Second.
And Councilwoman Sabino, second. Please vote. Oh, wait. Go ahead.
Okay. So, the recommendation is approve the establishment and implementation of a proposed grant program. So, okay. I'm ready.
City Attorney, you have anything to add? Okay, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Item H, future agenda items. At this time, the city council may process items or discussions or actions of future duly agenda, city council, agenda, city council meeting, the consequence of the major, majority of the quorum is required to place the item on the future agenda. Well, I messed that all up. Does anybody have any requests for a future agenda item? No, none? Okay. Item I, City Council Communications, Councilwoman Michelle Sabino?
All right. There's been a lot happening since our last meeting. October 10th to the 12th, I attended JPIA Risk Management Meeting. And at that event, they did provide a lot of really good trainings that took place then. One of the most notable things, or two of the most notable items that they did bring up was SB 553. All organizations, businesses, are required to develop the Workplace Domestic Violence Plan for anyone who has more than 10 employees on staff, as well as mitigating disruptive behavior in meetings, which, I mean, all of our three people have been pretty, you know, calm and quiet during all of our meetings. October 14th, attended Farmers Insurance Ribbon Cutting. That business has been amazing in being able to help the community right now, especially with those who have been removed from homeowners insurance, getting dropped, which has kind of just been a running issue throughout the state of California. I know one of the local senators will be holding a town hall for any families impacted by that. So, if there's anyone who's interested, I'm happy to share that information with them. October 15th, also attended the ribbon cutting for Quick Quack Car Wash. And then, the 17th to the 19th, up at Cal Cities Conference, in which they did highlight grant writing programs, as well as some collaborative efforts in Orange County dealing with the unhoused in that region. October 29th, we had a great community event at Woody's that was co-hosted by the Machado family, in which they were giving toys to disadvantaged youth. And then, October 31st, thank you to the staff and everyone who put on the trunk-or-treat. It was amazing turnout. I dressed up as public safety official while my counterparts wore their city attire. So, we're hoping to coordinate... Oh, yes, you were Zora or someone. Yes?
Yes.
And so, that was a lot of fun. I'm hoping maybe next year, we're all the minions. I don't know. And then, the 6th and the 7th, we did experience a citywide public safety power shut-off. And so, I just wanted to thank the city manager and the staff for their response. I know that it was not something that was within our control. It's not something that we have any designation over. However, we did, we did move into action with being able to make sure that those at the senior resident facility were taken care of. The mayor and I were both in contact with residents there to make sure that their needs were met, that they were in a safe space because there were those who have mobility disabilities and who were up on the second floor, who no longer had access to an elevator, and those who had medications that needed to be refrigerated. So, thank you to the staff for that. And then, yesterday, I attended the Veterans Day Ceremony. So, anyone who saw me there wearing jeans, which normally I'm in a dress or suited, I apologize, we were out of town, and we came back in very late to make sure that we were there. So, that way, I could see my brother speak at that event yesterday. So, great event. I'm sorry that there wasn't advertisement by the organizations presenting it, but nevertheless, it was still a great event. So, that was, that was my month.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Well, tonight represents my last working meeting, city council meeting, as a member of the city council. And so, rather than talk about some of the events or activities that I was engaged in, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank my colleagues in the city council and staff for what has been a wonderful and fulfilling experience for me. When the council elected to appoint me to Mayor Hussey's vacant city council seat, I indicated at the time that I hoped to be value-added to the council, to the city council. And I've strived to do that. And so, when we talked about the legislative advocacy program, one of the key components was building relationships. I think we've done that as a group. I've worked four, five cities during my career, 37 years in active duty, including Grand Terrace. And the professionalism of the staff is beyond comparison. The unity and camaraderie and ability to work through thorny issues by the city council, my colleagues, it's been outstanding from beginning to end. We haven't always agreed on issues, but we found a way to overcome levels of adversity that might have created issues for this community in the past. The city council has the best interest of the community at heart, and it's wonderful to work with a group of people that are all united in that mission. We might go about it a different way. I may take Interstate 15, you may take the surface streets, but the goal is the same, the objective is the same. And so, my next meeting will be short and sweet. It'll be the swearing-in ceremony. But I wanted to thank the current council, particularly, for working with me, putting up with my long-windedness and verbiosity. And I wish you the very best. My wife and I have been here 40 years. We're not going anywhere. And I'm here in part because I worked with the mayor, supported the mayor when he, in his run for office. And during our discussions about walking neighborhoods and whatnot, he asked me to at least consider coming back on the council. So, he gets the credit or discredit for my presence here. And then, sitting next to the person who I think is the unofficial historian for Grand Terrace on so many different levels, can't tell you how much I've learned from Doug, just on sidebar conversations. And so, that's been, that's been a great experience for me, as well as working with Councilmember Allen and learning more about him, how the similarities of our backgrounds, where we came from, who we've known, and how we've approached different things in life. That's, that goes back to that whole aspect of building relationships. And I hope that the council continues to do that, focus on that, because it makes the job of governance much, much easier. And last, you know, I've spoken to the city manager about issues that I feel our community has encountered in the past. One was administrative continuity, and the other was legislative continuity. Neither can be guaranteed, but the goals and the vision and the objectives for the city shouldn't, in my view, change from year to year. One year, we go north, and next year, we go south. It's kind of a recipe for disaster. And so, with the current city manager, Mr. Bolowitz, he's brought stability and professionalism and perseverance and commitment to his position, his responsibilities, and to, of course, working with the city council. And the work done by staff is a reflection of his, his approach to the job and how we, as a community, have begun to do some real serious things. Grand Terrace is on the cusp of some significant activity, development activity and growth over the next three to five years. And this council and the manager are responsible for that. And so, even though I won't have a front row seat, I'll be watching and cheering and observing and serving in whatever capacity you might feel warrants my time and attention. So, thank you to one and all. And I'll see you for about 15 minutes on December 10th, and then at various city events over the course of the next few years, God willing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Henderson. And thank you for putting your name in the hat when I told you you weren't leaving the street until you do. I blocked the road, but, you know, thank you for all your insight and all your work. But we'll leave all that for December 10th, because, you know, there's a lot of people that want to thank you that day. So, and Councilman Allen?
Okay. Thanks, Mayor. So, the Cal Cities Conference, I also attended, the one that Councilmember Michelle Sabino mentioned. And the trunk-or-treat on the 31st, that was a great event, and it just gets better and better every year. So, I really enjoyed that. And hats off to the Lions again for getting the best decorated event or the best decorated booth. I also attended the Colton Joint Unified School District's Community Cabinet Meeting, and, which happens once a quarter. And this past meeting that they attended, the superintendent discussed the, the professional pathways programs that the school uses to guide the students into their career paths. And there was also performances by the Grand Terrace High School Folklorica Dance Group, which was really interesting and really great. Folklorica dancing was really fun. Then, last week, I attended the Central Valley Regional Steering Committee's meeting, which, the Regional Steering Committee is the, for the Central Valley, for the Interagency Council on Homelessness for San Bernardino County. And so, at that meeting, we elected new board members and leadership for the committee for the upcoming term. And then, I also attended the following day, the San Bernardino County Interagency Council on Homelessness meeting. And at that meeting, they discussed the HAP-5 funding and the release of the CDBG funds and the home funds for the participating communities. There's 13 communities that participate in that, and we're one of them. And we get, I think, 1% of, it's sort of based on population and size and that sort of thing. So, I attended, yeah, I attended those meetings. And also, before I close out, I just want to remind everyone that tomorrow at 8:00 at the, in the community room, right across the hall over here, we'll have our Chamber of Commerce meeting. So, it'd be great to see you all there. And then, at, I think it's about 9:00, 9:00, between 9:00 and 9:30, we're going to meet down at the Vegan Corner Restaurant, which has been selected as the Business of the Month. And we're going to present them with their achievement award. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. Mayor Potem?
Real quick, thank you, Mayor. I did attend the Quick Quack. I'm happy to see that that, even though it was a long fuse, made it into the queue. And I think it'll help invigorate our bar and road. Long, we went to the Long Beach Cal Cities Conference, spent an inordinate amount of time reviewing consultant situations, as well as financial mechanisms regarding site improvements and maintenance and so on for cities and different jurisdictions. Enjoyed the trunk-or-treat Halloween event. Thought it was great. We had 4,500 to 5,000 attendees, which was, it just keeps getting bigger. And then, was able to pinch-hit for the mayor at the Fiesta Village 50th Anniversary, which, of course, tugged at my heartstrings because my daughter and my granddaughter both spent a lot of my money at Fiesta Village. And it was good quality time. And so, when I sent that, some of the pictures over to my daughter, her comment was, "It was a long time ago." And yeah, it was 50 years, there's no doubt. And then, attended the Veterans Day Celebration by Hook or by Crook. Didn't know for sure whether we had an event, but we did, and was kind of counting on it. So, that turned out to be a great event and always reminds me of the importance of the dedication and the commitment of the American people. And now, we have a new year to be faced with and some new circumstances. But I know, at least at the local level, we have a good bunch of committed individuals with varied talents, and I'm looking forward to it. And of course, I appreciate the efforts of the staff and all those individuals that are, have been so good in lending their time in all of our different events. It just, it makes the community the kind of community that Grand Terrace is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. I did all the events too, and I think I was...
I did all the events too, and I think I was dressed up. I was dressed up like how I go hiking, so, you know. My wife says sometimes I dress up like a homeless person, so, I don't know. I did have somebody pull over and ask if I wanted water one time. Anyway, the Veterans Day event, you know, I had the Mayor Proten call me and ask me, "Is it going?" And I said, "Well, I saw a flyer that Johann put out about it, and it says 10 to 2, so I don't know what time the ceremony is." So, I found the ceremony was at 11:00, and I figured I'd get the word out. And I thought Councilman Henderson was already going to be there showing off his cars, but we missed you yesterday with your fast cars and stuff. One great thing is the Grand Terrace High School Football Team has made it past the first string in the CIF playoffs. They played a second-seat team. So, there's going to be a home game this Friday. It's on the 92321 community, how to buy tickets, everything's online nowadays, but it starts at 7:00, but like, I suggest get there early. It's, you know, it's proud of the coaches, the staff, and the young men out there playing, and the cheerleaders cheering, and the band. Everybody put together, it's a good home team effort. Also, on the power outage, I did announce it yesterday during the veterans ceremony. I was not responsible for the power outage, because a lot of people think I have control of the power. I do not have a switch in my house to turn the power off and on. But it was a lesson learned. Thank you Conrad and staff for bringing him a warm shelter and stuff, and Councilwoman Sabino calling me up about, you know, her concerns over the residents over there at the senior center. And she said, "I heard the power is out," and I drove about, what was it, 10:30, 11:00 o'clock at night, and the power was out. And like Mr. Sanchez, it was, we didn't realize all the power was out, you know. And when I called Mark Cloud, a representative, really nice guy, I asked him if you heard anything. I go, "Do you hear anything?" He goes, "No." I go, "That's right, the wind's not blowing. When are you going to turn the power on?" But they have protocols for that. So, I was on the phone till like 1:30 Wednesday, then back again till 12 something. So, you know, people don't realize too that when you're on the council, you do sacrifice family time. So, I only got to go see my grandsons for one day. And I know some things were said, like, you know, "Mayor, do your job," and all that stuff, and your grandchildren aren't proud of you. So, you can say anything you want to me, but don't say anything about my family or the grandchildren. I'm just going to leave it at that, you know. So, anyway, but we do need to establish a contingency plan. We also need to work with the senior apartments on them having a contingency plan to make sure those seniors are safe. That is a privately-owned facility. We only own the senior center, but those are residents, and they cannot be prepared. Like, you guys need to be prepared in your own household with the generator, with water and food, just like an earthquake, be prepared for that. You know, I was not prepared for that hurricane that was at my son's house. He's prepared now. Four days without power is double that, so, don't rely on the government to come knocking on the door one minute after it happens. You rely on your neighbors, neighbors helping neighbors, residents, you know, coming together, volunteers coming together. There's, you know, this is a lesson learned on this, and we're going to learn our lesson, but it could be, it could have been worse, and it could have been a fire. It could have been something. So, once again, thank you for all the volunteers. Conrad, are you going to mention about the tree lighting ceremony? Okay. All the volunteers that put the effort in, it was, Michelle, your brother did a really good speech. I know you guys are proud of that young man, and, you know, I was just listening to him and, you know, how you make your plan, you know, God has a plan for you, and he gives you the resources and how you become, overcome that diversity, and you don't have to, what the cards are drawn to you, you don't have to take that, those cards. You can change out those cards and move forward. So, really good speech that young man had. And so, that's all I have. And Councilman Henderson, you know, I'm going to be talking a lot about you to try to make up for that time that you've been talking all the time, so, we'll do that. But like you said, you know, we really, I really, really appreciate you coming and putting your name on the plate, you know, and come up here and come and be a part of our team. And, you know, the council who picked you, you know, they knew that, you know, they were picking somebody who's a team player and that was, you know, bringing all the experience and stuff, so, we really appreciate it. And I'm going to miss a road trip, so if you still want to come with me, so.
I'll take you up.
Okay. So, city manager, communication?
Yes. So, first, I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Kevin Fries, who is our new chief of police and started last week, week before, and looking forward to working with him. He's already dug into the sheriff's substation, working with the officers here, and I'm looking forward to great relationship and everything that we have going on. So, I think we've got a great pick, and I'm looking forward to it. So, thank you. The light-up Grand Terrace will be December 5th, 4:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. And assuming everything works out, Santa Claus may be there. So, yeah, the day after, I'm shaving. But I hope to see everybody there. It'll be a great event. And I don't want to beat a dead horse, but, you know, the mayor made the comment about preparations, and when the power outage incident happened, we, as the city staff, said, "We're going to treat this as a full-on disaster." And we spun up as this for a, as a practice, because you only get good at things you practice doing. So, we learned a lot of lessons. We learned things that we can do better, and I'm hoping that the residents learned from this too, that, okay, the power went out this time, but next time, it could be an earthquake, a fire, a flood, something as simple as the sewer line backs up on your house and you have to deal with some things or move somewhere else or whatever. So, remember, we aren't in a hazard-prone area. You should have a week or two of water in the house, a week or two of food, blankets, those kind of things, because there's really no excuse for a two-day incident to happen and residents in Southern California to be caught flat-footed. We know it's coming. We don't know what's coming, but something's coming. So, let's make sure we're ready for whatever's coming and have those basics there. And then finally, I will be, not be here on the December 10th meeting. I was unable to count the calendar properly, and so, I messed up my travel arrangements. But I did, I did want to make the last statement for, at least for me, from Councilman Henderson. You know, he says I always have a story for everything. And so, my story for him is, is that he was appointed to the council, and I said, "This is marvelous. This is just what I need. A former city manager, the guy that sat in my chair on the council, and he's going to come help me. Oh, this is going to be great." And how wrong I was. Councilmember Henderson has been nothing but insightful, helpful, working for the good of the community, oftentimes really looking at things that he fundamentally may disagree with, but bringing them out into the open to discuss and so that everybody gets a chance to weigh in and have that input. And probably one of the greatest collaborators and inclusive individuals I've worked with in the public arena. So, Councilman Henderson, thank you, and thank you for being part of my story now too. And that is it.
All right. Well, Lieutenant, we're going to put you on the spot. You have anything you want to say? I know you're looking at Measure M and you're keeping your fingers crossed, and we all are. Poor Johann there, he's not getting any sleep at night, so, he's nervously waiting by. I say, I have faith in our community that it'll pass, so, would you like to say anything?
Yes, Lieutenant Kevin Fries, and I'm excited to be here. I've been on the department just about 18 years. I've never had the opportunity to work central station. This is a new opportunity for me, but about four weeks now here, met Conrad just a few weeks ago here, but I'm excited, excited to get in here. There's been a lot of great things that have happened. I live just on the outskirts of Grand Terrace here, so I visit this community often, and just so far, everybody I've met, staff meetings, and this is my first city council meeting. I'm very, very excited to get feet-first into this. Brian Lane's a dear friend of mine, so I've sat down with him and had numerous conversations, so I want to just carry the good foot forward and just keep having progress and working with fire and everybody here, and I'm excited to be part of the team, so thank you.
Well, thank you for joining us, sir, and I'm sure you'll be hearing from us about homelessness and all that other stuff, so. Gary, you got anything to say? I'm sorry you have to sit by the fire department, you know, I know how.
That's the best part of this day. No, just a week from today, we are watching another wind event that is occurring or possibly occurring with a high pressure setting in that will bring Santa Ana-type conditions. Right now, it sits at about 40%, so we are watching it through the EOC. So, to the prepared point, be prepared, because this will not be the last time that this possibly occurs. So, just be prepared in the city of Grand Terrace, and if I get any information, I'll pass it along to Conrad. That is it.
I have a question for you. So, our senior apartment, the elevators were out, and, you know, staff's not going to bring seniors down, because, one, liability, two, we don't want, you know, we're not professional to bring them down. How ready is our fire department to evacuate the senior center or something?
Very. Conrad called me during the event, and whether we bring it down multiple engine companies or a strike team of engine companies, we also have our hand crews readily available, and we would be able to get anybody down from the second story that's not ambulatory.
Okay. I know we've got a lot of plans for that, and I'm sure you're going to be involved in there to help it, so make sure those seniors are safe and, you know. But, yeah, like Conrad said, lesson learned. Thank God, you know, this was like a training opportunity, and another good thing to try to do for residents that are listening, if you want to be involved, our CERT program, well, is always taking volunteers. They would love to have you on there. And, you know, things have changed. We don't know what's going to happen, so it's not just the boring stuff, you know, but it's good to be training. Councilman Allen was on CERT, so he could contest that, so you never know, but it's always good to be prepared, and thank you guys for everything you do. We're still keeping our, I don't know if I can say it legally. Can I say, "Keeping my fingers crossed for Measure M"? I did say it, but I'll keep my fingers crossed. All right? Well, thank you. All right. So, we have a closed session conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuit of Government Code Section 5495, 4.5, 5495, 6.9, name of the case, Advocate Environmental versus Grand Terrace, San Bernardino Superior Court Case, CIV SB 2423305. And number two, conference with legal counsel anticipating litigations with, anyway, pursuit of Government Code 5495, 4.5. I'm getting all tongue-tied today. I have jury duty. Can you guys give me out jury duty Thursday? Okay. So, we're going to go in for a closed session, and I don't know if you guys are in here. Our next meeting's going to be December 10th, but like, we're having our tree lighting ceremony on December 5th from 4:00 to 8:00. And the tree lighting's at 6:30, right?
December 5th is my birthday, so bring presents. Thanks.
Okay. Well, we will.
Santa Claus will talk to you.
We'll take pictures of you on Santa's lap and make a wish. Oh, wait, I didn't take that class. Well, happy birthday. What are you going to be, like, 21?
I wish.
Well, you look younger than me, Ken, so you still look good, so. Anyway, but, you know, hopefully, we'll see everybody there at the tree lighting ceremony. It's going to be a great event. It's going to be Mr. Henderson's last event on his birthday. Are you coming out for your birthday?
Yes.
Okay, great. And thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. We'll see you in a little bit. If you're still here, I know Daisy will still be here, she has to be here, but we'll see you in a little bit. We're going to adjourn to closed session.
Going to go and reconvene to open session. Council gave guidance to staff. City attorney, you want to read the ordinances?
Sure. With respect to item one, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation for the case of Advocates of the Environment versus City of Grand Terrace. Update was provided by the city attorney. Direction was provided to the city attorney, however, no reportable action. Next item was conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation for one case. Information was provided to the city council. Direction was provided to the city attorney, however, no reportable action. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And so, our next regular meal will be December 10th at 6:00 p.m. And any requests, items to place on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office. And don't forget about the tree lighting ceremony on December 5th from 4:00 to 8:00 at Azure Hills, and we hope to see everybody there to bring in the festivities. So, thank you, council, for your input and your city staff, and meeting adjourned.